Hello, everybody. Appreciate you coming out tonight. See, it looks like Mickey up there says it's 6:00. We've got a special guest tonight to gavel us in. We've got Amaya Spears. Hang on just a second, she's anxious. She is the daughter of Alisa. And Brian Spears, she goes to Jefferson Elementary School, right? I told her I heard all the cool kids go to school there, and she is in the 4th grade. So I'm gonna turn it over to her.
I called this meeting to order.
Okay. So we've called to order. Let's take the roll.
Mayor?
Here.
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 Very good, thank you.
We have our invitation. We've got Pastor Ben Gill from Front Line Church gonna come and lead that for us tonight. So, as would Stan, please.
Thank you, guys. Let's pray. God, I thank you that you love cities, and thank you that you love small towns, and thank you that you love counties. And we just pray, tonight, Lord, for your help, for wisdom, clarity. Pray that you would be with all of these leaders, and that you would give them compassion, and clarity, and wisdom, as we make decisions tonight for the town that you love and the county that you love. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Okay, so if you join in, the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. One more quick thing is that I want to point out that we've got the OBU State and Local Government class near the back there on our right-hand side. But welcome and welcome to everybody that came out tonight. Brings us to citizen participation. So same rules as always, three minutes, and then 12 minutes on any one topic. If you would, come forward, sign in, let us know who you are, and the floor is all yours. How are you, sir?
Hello, how are you?
Good to see you.
I'm Mike Little, and would like to bring you some good news today.
We'd always like that.
You might not be able to read that, but I think you know how to hold on me. Last, oh, it's been probably four months ago or five that we went through the process of having some... Well, it's longer than that, time goes by. Some lots given from the county to the city, and then they were given to COCA.
Right.
Well, since that time, we have gone through the process of getting the bank on the corner of Main and Broadway, put on the National Register, and have applied for tax credits. And we failed on our first application in January, and we made another application in June. And since then, we went to Oklahoma Housing Finance and worked the process with COCA and got home funds. So we got that two weeks ago, so we have part of the money. And then, we will know, I told Rebecca, November 11th on whether we get the tax credits or not.
Cool.
And it's gonna be approximately $10 million project, and we do have some concerns, you know, with some of the things that I've talked to you about, Mayor, and Mr. Weaver, about security and some of our tenants, but we won't get into that, just want to be positive. It's gonna be between a nine, nine-and-a-half, and $10 million project, so it'll have approximately $200,000, $250,000 worth of sales tax that we'll turn over. And it'll consist of units on the first two floors, there will be offices for COCA, and then they'll run their transportation building out of the back. If they have enough room, then they will end up having a store, possibly, that they can sell and/or give away donated items to them. And then there'll be 12 houses down in the south, kinda east quadrant of town, and I'll just give you a copy of the study if you guys want to pass them out. I didn't get all the studies, all of the copy, all of the study in this copy, but I've made enough copies that I can give them, you guys, to look at them.
Very good.
So, I know you can't ask many questions, but I've been getting so many calls, and they put in the paper that it was on the National Register, so I thought I would just catch you guys up and thank you for giving us this opportunity.
Thank you, Mike.
All right.
And as Mike said, we won't respond to you when you come up and speak, but it's not because we're not listening to you. We, our rules just prevent us from doing it at that time, so... How are you?
Good evening, Commissioners. I brought my own pen.
There you go.
Because I remember sometimes there's not one here. So I am here, Miriam Bell, with United Way of Potawatomi County. And I'm here to give you a happy update that we are in the midst of our 2021 campaign. And, as you may or may not know, there are actually 20 city employees that are currently contributing to United Way of Potawatomi County. So we are very thankful for the support that the city has shown us. We're also thankful that there's some great partner agency representation on the commission, and also thankful for those of you that have been supportive through attendance and events, and through our fundraiser last week. So just to give you a little bit of an update on United Way and what we're doing right now, we currently have 23 partner agencies. I'm not going to list them all for you, but they are amazing agencies doing great work to feed the hungry, provide guidance for those that are looking to get out of poverty, housing the homeless, creating social connectedness, providing medical care, providing legal assistance, developing young leaders, providing safe and healthy activities, and safe childcare for youth, helping those in need during a disaster, providing opportunities for those with special needs, championing the youth advocacy, and connecting to resources through our 211 hotline. So that's just the tip of the iceberg of what's happening in our partner agencies. But we just wanted to say thank you for your support from the city. We're very thankful that we have employees that are contributing. We would love to see that number grow over the coming years, because we really need to increase awareness, because a strong community only comes from a strong culture of 501(c)(3) nonprofits doing great work to serve the need, and also a culture of volunteerism. So I'm gonna wrap up by thanking you all for volunteering, because I understand it is a really hard job, and you rose, raised your hand and said, "I want to do this amazing hard work to no benefit," and that's what we need our community to do. So thank you for leading the way and being great volunteers.
Thank you, Mary.
I'm gonna leave that for the next person.
There you go. Do we have a next person? There we go. How are you?
I'm well, thank you. So Erin Stevens with the Heart of Oklahoma Expo Center. I just wanted to take a moment to thank all of Shawnee and the community for the support they've showed our events in the last couple of weeks. We had a grand slam with the Paranormal Circus that was here. Anybody who drove anywhere near could see the big, huge arc and tent out there, and they ended up having to add three shows to their original six, just because of selling out. They were social distancing and all that inside the tent, but approximately 4,500 people came out to support that event, which is great. And then wanted to give a quick shout-out, we do have Halloween Town coming up on October 17th, that's next Saturday. And we are still looking to fill booths for that. We are moving it to the Fred Humphries Pavilion, so a very large space, about 26,000 square feet. So obviously, we need some booths to fill that area. This year, we've added, it's on a Saturday, we've added an hour to hopefully help with those lines. Please bear with us, because we know there's still going to be lines, but we're looking forward to a good event. We just need some booths and some local organizations and businesses to come out and support, and set up their area, decorate, and have fun. So it's 2:00 to 6:00 PM on next Saturday, and just contact the Expo for more information. You can email info@shawneexpo.org, or call our office, 405-275-7020. It's open to all of Shawnee surrounding areas. We have sponsorships available, the whole nine yards. It's gonna be a great event. There's a craft show going on at the Expo that day as well, and a flying event over at the airport that day. So gonna be lots going on in that area of Shawnee, so we encourage you to come out and participate.
Is there a cost for that event?
It is, there's not a cost. There's, it's free admission for everyone. This year, we're actually partnering and teaming up to support the community market with a food drive. So while there is no actual admission fee, we do encourage everyone who's able to bring one or two non-perishable food items. I mean, if you think about that, last year, we had over 3,200 people attend the event. If everyone brings one can of food, that's three, over 3,000 cans of food for the community and local need. So, great, great cause there, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else? I don't see anyone, so we will move on. So we will go to consider the approval of consent agenda. Would anybody like to pull anything from the consent agenda? See lots of folks shaking their head. No. Give you another second to look at that. Everybody good? Alrighty, so we need a motion to approve, then.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Alright, Matthews and Rutherford. Alrighty, you got a motion, a second, let's call the question. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you, gentlemen. Number three, pet of the week. I believe we have, I think, a dog back there. Hard to tell with the reading glasses on. Maybe it's a cat. It's fuzzy, that much I can tell.
Hi, I'm Officer Spoon. This is Kodiak. I think he's about two years old. He's available for adoption, although I think we already have somebody interested in adopting him while I was waiting out there, so... We have, we do have plenty of other dogs at the shelter. We have an adoption event from 9:00 to 2:00 at Lowe's on Saturday also, so you guys can come out and take a look at the ones that are available there.
So you adopted the dog out in the lobby?
I think he's coming in the morning to go ahead and adopt Kodiak in the morning, so...
Wow. Man, that's, you work fast.
That's nice of you, Joe.
That's awesome.
Yeah, that was pretty awesome.
And so, next Saturday at Lowe's, 9:00 to 2:00?
That'll be this Saturday, yes, sir, from 9:00 to 2:00.
Cool. Hopefully, you can work just as fast there. Awesome. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, guys.
Alrighty, number four, consider approval of citizen participation plan, CPP, for the City of Shawnee and Community Development Office. I think we've got Brian Logan coming to talk to us about that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners.
How are you, sir?
Pretty good. So the Department of Housing and Urban Development requires a citizen participation plan, and implementation of the community planning and development programs according to the 24 CFR, Part 91, Subpart B. And so our jurisdiction currently had one, but it's not been updated, and so we had to adopt a new one as of before, or after the 2015. So that's what you'll find, is the new citizen participation plan. So we have, I'll throw this in there, so we have to have citizen participation plan, a citizen participation when we do our consolidated plan, our annual action plan, and also our CAPR, which is the Annual Performance Evaluation Report. Gives a chance for the citizens to give feedback if they don't like something, so...
Okay. Very good. Anybody have any questions for Brian while we got him?
I just have one comment.
Yes, sir.
I think it's great when we allow citizens to be involved in discussions and have input on things that we're doing in the community.
Sure. Absolutely. Absolutely.
Is the Section 5 on non-English-speaking residents, is that standard, I assume?
Yes, and so you'll notice that we put, I believe, 48 hours, gives us 48 hours to, for us to find somebody to interpret as well.
Right.
I'm hoping Chance can speak Spanish at that point.
Is he learning? I learned one of our staff members, she's, oh, there she is, she's learning a language. Maybe she can translate for you.
I don't know if you get any Russian speakers.
Well, we've got someone ready, in case, so that's cool. Any other questions, or anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Alright, Mr. Flood? Mark? Okay. Thank you, sir. Alrighty, so we have a motion and a second, so let's vote. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you very much. So we have number five. Consider an ordinance relating to the Comprehensive Plan amending Chapter 22 of Shawnee Municipal Code by creating a new Article 7 of Chapter 22, providing for the creation and adoption of the comprehension plan, comprehensive plan, providing for repeal, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing for emergency clause. And I believe Rebecca's up.
Yes.
Good to see you.
You as well. So, as you all know, we adopted our 2040 Comprehensive Plan last October. The amendment process existed under Section 22, however, it was very vague, without much detail, and we had actually zero application or fee to correspond with that. And so that's what you have in front of you. I will make note that there was an amendment to Section 22-728 to G1, which replaces the word "city planner" with "city commission." Both terms are used throughout that document, but that particular paragraph talks about city commission having the final say, as far as approving an amendment application to the Comprehensive Plan. So I did want to make note of that. Also, when I was researching communities and how they were doing amendment applications, a lot of them were annually, however, some of them were quarterly, and we decided in this draft to go with a quarterly option, as we have a lot of growth happening in our community. We've got the I-40 expansion, we've had a couple of landowners, developers lately, that are interested in having this process. And so with that said, my proposal is going to be to do December, March, June, and September, and that is the very soonest that someone could get through that application and meet that 30-day deadline. And so they would have an option to be on that December meeting if they wanted to be. So that's something that we wanted to consider. I'm happy to answer any questions. I think that we know there's a lot of different moving parts and pieces over 20 years in developing a plan that can change things, whether it's grant opportunities that become available, location of new schools, and community facilities. There's a lot of reasons, or it might be a small modification, changing a density but staying within that use district. So I think that we'll have that mechanism now to help serve our developers and our landowners more efficiently, and then we can start entertaining those applications. The first planning commission meeting, which is gonna be at the first week of December. If you all have any questions, I'm happy to address those as well.
Any questions? I mean, this...
Was the amendment process before yearly? How did we address that before?
I don't know that it said, Joe. The previous one...
Yeah, so state statute requires the Comprehensive Plan, and it also requires an annual review, but for whatever reason, going back historically, the City of Shawnee had never fleshed out what that review process looked like specifically, and what entities were responsible for performing that. So if you'll notice reading through here, we've assigned that responsibility and created a very clear procedure to do that. The other thing you notice, Commissioners and Mayor, is the one annual meeting is required every single year.
Right.
The quarterly meetings will be at the discretion of the planner, based upon whether or not there are applications.
Right. It was, because this kinda came a couple months ago when we were considering...
39th Street.
Up there on 39th Street, exactly. And we really didn't have a good mechanism to even address that. So this, this will give us that mechanism, and be very responsive, I think, on a quarterly basis. I think that's, that's pretty good.
I would further add, with particular reference to that example, Mr. Mayor, that this application process will be allowed to proceed contemporaneously through Planning Commission, and ultimately to the City Commission with a rezone application, so there won't be any slowdown to the development.
Right.
As a result thereof.
It can go with the same...
Correct. Yes.
And when it, when it comes down to it coming to the commission, any amendment is gonna require a 2/3 majority vote by the commission.
As drafted before you today, that is the requirement.
Is that a requirement from the state, or this just how we have it worded in the...
That is how staff has it worded presently. That's certainly subject to...
So if not a simple majority, it'll take five?
Correct.
And why is that?
Well, we had a meeting last week and discussed it, and kinda kicked around in review of several other municipalities, and just kicked around different ideas, and ultimately, I think Rebecca and I's decision there was because this is a significant change under the comp plan, and just to make sure that there's certainty going forward with all parties with regard to, I guess, what we're gonna, trying to get the right word, but just comfort with that decision going forward. But it was simply based on looking at how others have done it, and looking at the situation, and wanting to create certainty that that was the correct path for the City of Shawnee going forward. But we expected that would be something the commission would discuss, and certainly, you guys are the ultimate, you have the ultimate say on that. If that goes back to a simple majority, there's no bar under state statute or under our...
If I might, would that suggest that there's not confidence in the commission, as we do on all of our votes, having a simple majority?
Well, whether it suggested or not, it was never part of the conversation with staff. I can assure you of that.
Well, that's the way I interpret it, and I don't think of any other way to understand that. So I think a simple majority of the commission, as all votes, should be applicable here.
And we have other situations that require larger than a simple majority.
What are those?
Well, certainly any emergency clause, it requires a 3/4 vote at that point, and then, I apologize, I'm remiss, but there are a few other situations within our code of ordinance, but that was certainly not meant to cast dispersions upon this commission or any other commission. It was just looking at a survey of like similarly sized communities around the state, and how they handled the process.
Okay.
So a vote to change or to amend, would take a super majority?
Again, that's currently authored, but...
Right.
An amendment, because that could be easily made this evening.
If we're not gonna amend, then, okay.
Well, I'd like to present an amendment when the time is, but I'd also like city planner to, in a nutshell, describe what it is exactly that you're wanting to do with this, just simple, just in our words.
Okay, so amendments should be considered if we have a proposed development on the table, and that is appropriate, and is still going to align with the goals and objectives of our plan. And then there might be an ODOT project that's not currently on our radar, and say hypothetically, that project comes in, that would change that corridor, and that would be a very compelling reason to amend the Comprehensive Plan. And then others would be smaller deviations, such as density, sticking within the residential zoning and that use, but changing from low, medium, or high.
So any, any change to the Comprehensive Plan falls under this?
Yes. So you all have the ability to make requests. Citizens, which would be landowners or developers, also have that ability, and so they have something specific that they're wanting, and usually there's a project or some type of community economic development behind that. Otherwise, it would just default to our annual review, which we would encourage citizens to participate at that, and that would be more of suggestions, molding language, certain things that we could implement that would help to meet our goals and create the community that we all want for the future.
Okay, I apologize. I'm not trying to be difficult.
Uh-huh.
I think you know from previous meetings that I have really been concerned about our lack of ability for somebody to apply, once we have that master code, and to apply for a change, and I have a problem with that, and I've expressed it. I think this further, maybe your language says that it clarifies and makes it more specific of what we do, but I still don't understand why when we have a master plan that maybe isn't in the best interest of a particular landowner, that we can't go through the process and have that changed like we have through applications to your commission, to the Planning Commission. And I'm having difficulty understanding why we are making it difficult for our citizens who want to do something different than the master plan identifies to be able to do that.
So as Joe had mentioned earlier, if someone is to apply for this amendment application, they could run those consecutively, so that would go to Planning Commission, and say that would be item two. Item three on there could be that rezone. So if people were agreeable to that and wanted to recommend that, that would come before you all, and it would go amendment, rezone. And so it is condensed into that same time period, it's not adding any additional time. And I will say that between myself and the city attorney's office, we expedited to get this document to you, because we actually know developers that are interested in an application and a process that we currently did not have before.
So this is helping what I've been concerned with?
Yes.
It sounds, it sounds as if you're working toward a solution to be able to make this work for everybody.
Yes, and there was, for whatever reason, there was mention in our old code, but it just never laid out an application fees or anything specific that we would have to guide someone through a process. So that is this process before you this evening, that I think is going to make things very seamless. We want to be builder-friendly, and I think we want to see a certain growth in our community that's going to be possible through this application.
Great. Thank you for clearing that up.
And, and you know, to me, it seems like, well, you get three times as many opportunities now to address that as we did in the past, and we didn't have that hardly spelled out at all. And I really give you guys a lot of credit, I mean, two months ago, we were discussing a situation, and we didn't have any means of doing that, and you guys, I think in my mind, have been very responsive in getting something here in front of us, so that we can maybe make that easier.
Very quickly, give us a...
Yeah, I mean, government usually doesn't move real fast, and here you guys are two months later, and we're, we've got this in front of us, so I really appreciate that.
This might be for you or Mr. Mondren. My understanding, as I was, this was beginning to be discussed as I was departing the Planning Commission. By statute, we're required to have a comp plan, we're also required to follow the comp plan, and that's perhaps maybe where we've been falling short. We've had a comp plan, but we haven't necessarily followed it. The amendment process helps us stay statutorily in line, instead of just changing it as we wish.
Who requires us to follow that? Where are we required?
I believe that's statutory.
I think it's state law.
And I think Commissioner Weaver goes to answer your previous question as well, and say, "Why do we have this?" Well, state law requires we have a comp plan, state law requires that that comp plan be reviewed annually, and that, and state law requires that there be a process to amend it. And it does not allow us to go outside of that comp plan without amendment. Candidly, Commissioner, that has not been the historical practice in the City of Shawnee, and that has resulted in spot zoning and situations that have become presidential that create difficulty in adhering to well-thought-out planning procedures on a go-forward basis. So the hope is that by fleshing out that procedure, and doing it in such a manner that it can track simultaneously or at the same time as the rezoning process, that it will both expedite that and create a clear path for those future plans that will remain in line with a Comprehensive Plan, because you guys have the ultimate authority to amend that Comprehensive Plan, but you have to have the rationale and the reasons to back up while you're doing it. This will provide that to you, properly vetted through the Planning Commission, and allow this body to make those final determinations.
Okay, so it's statute, then, that requires, it's not a... Okay, so it's statute then that requires, it's not a suggestion, it's a requirement that that be followed?
Yeah, I, I might go out on a limb and say Chance probably wouldn't have put $250,000 in his budget for it if he didn't have to. It's, uh, it is a process required to undertake.
Well, I knew the master plan is, I'm talking about amending and, and amending the master plan.
Yeah, that's all, that all falls under the same statute.
Okay, and I, I know that we have not followed that in the past, and that's part of my, um, being new on the commission and, and not understanding how that we've done it before and not able to do it now. So I appreciate clarification. I'm still here learning, so, um, there'll be more questions.
Good questions.
I would like to make a motion at the appropriate time.
Anybody got anything else to discuss? Danny's down there.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
I think we'll attend to your motion.
Approval of the comp plan when it comes to us is simple majority or super majority?
Simple majority.
For the approval of the entire document?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's all, that's all.
Anybody got anything else? Saw you down there studying, so I thought you might.
I'm just going to run it through the advantages or disadvantages of the two-thirds majority, I'm, I mean, the scenario for that to, to play out.
Yeah. And as Joe said, I mean, we have the power to change that if we, we choose to, it's just whether we think it's a big enough issue to, to change. And there's nothing to say that we did it one way this year, we couldn't change it next year, so.
And I think our intent behind that was just that this governing body that makes decisions is very comfortable and confident with whatever that motion is to pass that particular amendment, where if it's kind of a house divided and it's a four-three vote, um, will that be an ongoing topic of conversation for those that were not in favor of it?
Right.
And so we really want to feel that, um, you all are confident and comfortable with those decisions when they come before you, um, but that is completely, um, that is completely changeable if you all want to go a different direction this evening.
Yeah, I, I think it should be rigorous to change it. However, we shouldn't assume that we're going to get everything in the twenty-year plan correct.
No.
Like, I think, I think Commissioner Weaver brings up a good point in that if it only takes four votes to pass the entire document, does it really warrant five to make one change? Like, to me, I, whether it's either way, I think they should probably line up, because we should also be comfortable with the entire several hundred-page document we're going to pass.
So if you have, um, one commissioner absent or abstain, where does your majority lie?
Abstain counts as a no, correct?
Stain counts as a no. Absent, assuming that you have proper quorum, otherwise if it's just a single absence, then you would apply it to the quorum that evening.
So if, if there was six of us, we'd have to have four.
Yeah, two-thirds, I can give that map.
There we go, yeah.
Just bear, remember that one.
You're ahead of me.
All right, if I could just offer my motion, I, I make a motion that we move it to, as we always do, just a simple majority of the commission.
So approval with four of them rather than five?
That's correct. Or, or the simple majority depending on the number of members that are present.
Would the correct wording, do that be simple majority, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, and, and I want to clarify, Commissioner Weaver, and I was going to instruct on this, I would ask that if the change that's reflected in the draft before the commission, which shows Kit, City Commission under twenty-two dash seven twenty-eight two G one is the final decision-maker, that is not what appears in what was published with the agenda. And so if, if your motion includes, I'll just make sure you would clarify that it includes that the City Commission is the final decision-maker.
Okay, if, I'll amend that if my motion passes that we add that language to that amendment.
Okay, and so just to clarify and be a little too technical, and I apologize.
It's okay.
But it's a motion to approve the ordinance as presented with the exception of, uh, amending the term city planner to city commission in section twenty-two dash seven twenty-eight two G one and to strike the language requiring a two-thirds majority and replace it with a simple majority for approval in section twenty-two dash seven twenty-eight two G five.
Very good. Commissioner, are you happy with that?
Yes, I'm.
Okay, very good.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so I'm good.
I said I'd second.
You're not going to make him repeat at all?
I see that.
Okay, very good. So we have a motion and a second, um, so Joe, I think you're up.
If you, if you'd love to just.
Okay, let's wait for Lisa.
Just need verification on the, just the separate part of the motion where you're striking the language in five. So you're going to say amendment to comprehensive plan requires, are you going to say a simple majority or?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll show amendment by interliniation on two G five, the simple majority. And then for purposes of the motion, we'll also show amendment by interliniation, replacing city planner with city commission under two G one.
Right. Everybody, everybody good?
Are we voting only on the amendment, or are we going to vote on the whole thing at once?
I think we're voting on the entire question.
Yeah, as raised, Commissioner Saltor, the motion is for the entire document with those two amendments by interliniation.
Okay. Just make sure we're all on the same page.
Do you want me to read the ordinance title?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
An ordinance relating to the comprehensive plan, amending chapter twenty-two of the Shawnee municipal code by creating a new article eight, chapter twenty-two, providing for the creation and adoption of a comprehensive plan, providing for repeal, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing for emergency clause.
Okay, thank you, sir. So we recall the question. All righty, motion passes six I, one nay. Thank you very much. Item six.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Emergency clause.
Emer, okay, I guess we need to vote on the emergency clause, so, uh, we need a motion for, for that then.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, sir. Weaver.
I'll second.
And, and Matthews. Okay, we've got a motion and a second on the emergency clause, so we'll call a question on that. And motion passes six I, one nay. Okay, thank you. Now we'll move on to item six. Consider a resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, establishing a fee for the administrative fee for the filing of an application to amend the comprehensive plan pursuant to chapter twenty-two, article seven, and providing for the re-adoption of the city fee schedule in whole. All right, Rebecca's back up, it looks like.
So we just have a $370 fee and a $6 per property owner off the, that's going to be off the bonded abstractors list provided by the title company, so all of those property owners within a 300-foot radius, um, to cover the cost of processing, publication, mailing, and administrative staff time that would take to process this application.
All right, anybody get any questions for Rebecca?
I do, here I go again.
That's all right.
Has there been any input with anyone on raising these fees that in fact we haven't charged in the past?
Well, I guess we haven't had that process in the past. If it was entertained under a rezone application, that fee is $280.
So the, the charge for mailing to the 300-foot radius, there hasn't been a charge in the past?
Well, I think our fees are 15 or 20 years old at this point, but that is correct. There's currently not a fee on our other, um, outdated application fees.
Okay, would it not be prudent for us as a commission in trying to have total transparency to involve the public in, in this? Would it not be, I, I'm just trying, you know that I have some issues with, with, with where we're going? Is it, would it not be in the best interest for us to involve the public and discuss this, the people that it affects?
I would defer to Joe on that. We base this off of what similar communities were charging for the same process and application, and so that is where this particular fee came for, but I would ask Joe if that is common, uh, practice for the public to have, uh, participation on application fees and different charges.
Commissioner Weaver, the, any administrative fees we charge, um, guidance from the law will tell us they have to be rationally related to the amount of staff time and city resources that are expended in furtherance of that application or administrative process. The city of Shawnee does not typically involve, uh, input from the community in setting those fees, um, and I couldn't speak to any other municipalities with regard to that, I'm unaware, so I, I wouldn't want to say either way. Uh, in this particular situation, as Philings pointed out, we conducted a survey of similarly situated municipalities, and this fee is actually on the lower end of what other municipalities are charging. But that's what it was based on solely, and certainly this, this body has the discretion to, to change that, modify it, strike it, whatever, whatever you choose to do.
Well, when I sit and compute, um, I bring up, uh, the one that we had a couple of months ago, that my original discussion with us back and forth on Thirty-Ninth Street. Um, if we had had, if we had made this change, then they would have been applying for $370 fee plus $6 for all the, the people that were notified, which I think was around 100, is that right? About 100 people in that 300-foot radius?
No, uh, there, there were more signatures on the petitions, but the actual radius was between 30 and 40 property owners.
Okay, so that would really just add another couple hundred dollars to that, and, and then, um, and, and I had in my mind 100, remembering the number of signatures, not the number of households.
Yes, sir.
So, okay, I, I just, you know, I got this on Friday as the other commissioners did, and it was a big shock to me that we have a big change that to me is, is a big expense to our public without any input or any knowledge of them at all, and that's where I have a concern. I'm used to having more time to review and understand and ask questions and not have to do it like this in the public.
Right.
Which, you're pulling, you're, you're going to the courthouse to get the 300-foot, or is, or is who's, or the applicant, does he have to go pull that 300-foot look?
Yes, the applicant has to go to one of the local title companies and pull a bonded abstractors list, which is that 300-foot radius, um, so surrounding property owners can be notified of what is.
So he's going to have that expense also on top of $6 y'all are charging for?
Yes.
But that's, and Commissioner Sehorn, the, the city provides, which not all municipalities do, there's some, some put the burden on the applicant to send the formal notices, but those go via certified mail or return receipt. That $6 is an actual expense for the postage.
So you're sending that certified mail?
Right.
Yes, sir.
Basically.
We also do physical, um, signs that you've seen, if you've seen the yellow and black signs, uh, we furnish those, um, underneath that fee. Um, so several things are, um, related to that fee. Uh, by the time you deduct those actual costs, there's not much left over. Um, in fact, on some of my current applications, because the fees have not been updated in so long, we're actually operating in the red, um, due to what we have to pay for signage, mailing, publication in the local newspaper, et cetera. Um, and so, uh, like Joe had mentioned, we were trying to be conservative and go on the lower end of what some communities are charging.
And then one other consideration that was put into it was, we've always required the licensed sponsored abstractor list be required by the applicant for any rezone application, and because they're able to move these along simultaneously, that will be an expense that would just be incurred one time.
I'm good. Do I got anything else?
I, I was going to add one thing, I apologize. Commissioner Weaver, when we did a re-qualification a few years back, we moved all the fees, um, to a fee schedule that's determined by resolution so that they're not tied into the ordinances, so that they could be freely amended and re, uh, addressed situations where we're operating out of deficit because the ordinance hasn't been updated in a period of time. And so the, by doing it by resolution, it's a very flexible and fluid scenario that could be addressed later upon further examination or study, uh, if in fact we determine upon more information that that's not appropriate, and it's done so to have that flexibility.
Okay, anybody get any other questions, uh, comments? Good discussion. Okay, that being said, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mister Flood? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Mister Matthews. Okay, let's see, I think, uh, I think we're up to you, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, establishing a fee for the administrative fee for the filing of an application to amend the comprehensive plan pursuant to chapter twenty-two, article eight, and providing for the re-adoption of the city fee schedule in whole.
Thank you, sir. All righty, so we will call a question. Okay, let's see, motion passes five I, two nays. All righty, thank you very much. Moving on, number seven, consider bids, request for qualifications, RFQ, Santa Fe Historic Roof Project, RFQ award. Good seeing you, James.
Good evening, it's been a while.
It has.
Uh, tonight, uh, we're here to, to ask authorization to begin negotiations, uh, with a firm. On August 21st, we sent out or advertised an RFQ, um, to replace, to design a plan to replace the, the roof on the Santa Fe Depot. And as you're aware of that, you know, this is a particular style of roof, uh, it's a historic building on a historic register, so it's going to take some digging in to, to see how that's, that has to be done back, uh, to keep that, that building preserved as historic, so, um, we received back five qualified RFQs, Walker Consultants out of Dallas, Texas, Garber out of North Little Rock, Arkansas, WJE Incorporated out of Irving, Texas, GH2 Preservation Architects Tulsa, Oklahoma, and TAP out of Oklahoma City. Staff has reviewed all of these, discussed amongst ourselves about the qualifications, and, uh, we have decided that GH2 has the qualifications, uh, and tools to, to do this, so, uh, staff is ax, asking for authorization to begin negotiations with GH2 and bring back a contract to you for approval.
Any questions, comments?
I think it's, it's about time, huh?
Yeah, it's good to see, isn't it?
Yeah.
Really good to see. And that's definitely not just your average roof, is it?
No, it's not.
Yeah, got to do it right.
The other ones on the list, you don't feel were qualified to?
Some do have some qualifications there. We just felt that GH2, one, being local.
Mm-hmm.
And having qualifications and tools. They have other tools also that, uh, moisture-type tools and things that they can use to, to further, uh, investigate, uh, water infiltration and items like that within the building. They have a background in remodeling historic buildings.
Yeah, it's a whole different animal, isn't it?
Will you have the ability to, um, if you do not like their bid, to come back and, and ask for another, another option?
Okay.
Yes.
So at this point, all we're, all we're being asked to approve is your ability to go back and negotiate with, with that company.
And we're not required to get bids?
It's professional service. This is a professional service.
After the design is done, then there'll be a bid process to, uh, go look for a contractor to do the job, so, and that will be brought back in front of you also.
And Mr. Commissioner, this is for the design work, the architectural services, uh, for the roof replacement.
And all of the things it's going to take. Yeah, the whole roof up.
Yeah. Yep. Any other questions? Comments? Oh, we're all good. All righty, so we're looking for a, a motion.
Go ahead, I'll, I'll make a second.
Here, here, there you go. All right, so. All right, so Sehorn, and Mr. Weaver will second. All right, very good. Uh, da-da-da-da-da, okay, so we will call the question. And motion passes seven zero. New business.
Mr. Mayor, any new business?
No new business. Commissioners, comments, starting down to my left, how's that? Put you on the spot first.
Yeah, no, it's good. Uh, I enjoyed the discussion and that, I think we consider and about the ways that we improve our structure and, um, codes and stuff, I think that helps prepare us for growth and, um, appreciate staff putting it together quickly. A side note was, glad the Wolves won their football game on Friday. How about, that was good news. Um, fun to watch, and, uh, that's all I got.
Uh, I, I just want to apologize to the members and, and to Ms. Rebecca. My concerns are, um, I have a lot of concerns, and I'm here on the commission trying to make a difference, trying to make changes, trying to bring the public and involve the public, and sometimes I don't feel like we're doing that, so that's where I'm coming from. Fellow members, I want you to know that. I, you know, I want to work with all you guys, but I don't want to sit there and discuss agenda with you before the meeting, where we've predetermined something we're going to do. But I got this information on Friday, and I had no time to be able to even set up and schedule a meeting to discuss my concerns, so I had to do them here. That's the way the process works, but I'm not used to that with my background in politics, nor on my previous city commission experience. So, I have no bones with Rebecca, I have concerns, and I know that the city manager has directed her to run her operation, and I respect that, but I have concerns when we have a major, what I consider to be major, things that are, are sent to us on Friday, and we have a meeting on Monday, and if our schedule or your schedule doesn't work, to work those out between then, this is the only way to do it. So, I'm doing things and saying things that I might not in a normal circum, circumstance if I'd had discussion. I wanted to recommend that we postpone this, and I felt like I'd spoken enough that maybe my fellow members were, were troubled by my, um, my vocal, and, or, and the city attorney. I'm afraid that you've felt some offense from my comments, but it's not intended specific to anyone, it's just the process. I want the process to be more friendly for the public, for the commission, for everybody, and, and I want to just see an improvement made, and I just don't think if we can't communicate better, and we have people, whether it's me or whether it's any of the other commissioners that have to come and raise concerns to the public, when maybe we could take care of those things beforehand. And city manager and I spoke today, and he said, "Do you have any problems with the agenda?" And I said, "Yes," and I told him briefly what it was, but that's, you know, that's not the way to, to us, for us to discuss and, and work out what my concerns were. So, enough with that. I just, uh, I'm pleased with, um, I've seen some things in town. The Parks Department has done a much better job on, uh, maintenance of some places that I've been concerned with. I know that the, uh, cemetery has, has done work in, that's exceptional to some of the complaints that I've had, and I just hope to see, continue to see improvement in our community. This is where we live, this is what I believe in. I'm a regular caller into the Action Center for things that I see in town that need attention, and I hope that businesses will start to pay more attention to having pride in their own locations, and maybe expanding a little bit beyond their boundaries and taking care of maybe what's on the right-of-way and sidewalks, and, uh, that maybe we can all pitch in together and do a better job, so it's enough. Thank you. More than enough.
I would like to, to echo the thanks to, uh, staff and, and planning for, for putting this together and for being very intentional about, uh, looking at other, other communities that are thriving and, and doing well, to, to build this based off of that, not just of our own opinions on how we think things should go. Um, that, that makes me very happy that we're doing that, and also that, um, that there is a very detailed avenue to, to apply for, uh, a change versus, um, just kind of where we are before, where we, we knew, but it didn't, didn't feel like we had a, a very intentional way for individuals to, to ask for help or ask for a change. So, thank you for, for putting that together. Um, and just, again, would just like to say, I, I too have noticed the, uh, the grounds and maintenance people all over Shawnee getting, getting after it and cleaning up a lot of things that the, the crazy rain and weather had, had slowed them down on, and it, and it makes me happy to see the continued, uh, the continued pride taken in Shawnee, uh, to be the, the, the most amazing city this, this side of Oklahoma City, so thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
I was glad to see this process get done so quickly. It's been in our plan, but being able to clear it up and get it done took a lot of hard work by staff and attorney. We do need the details like we have now, we have a plan, so thank you guys for getting it rolled out so quick. On a good note, I was, that was a good note too, but going, going home, I, I like to drive down Main Street on my way home from, from work, and one of my thoughts echoed what Travis said and, and Mr. Weaver, the, uh, Boy Scout Park, drove by there and it's like, wow, look at this park. Just the detail that they had done, it, it just, it really looked good, and I'm starting to see more and more of that in our parks, in, in town, so, um, that's, that's awesome. I got to go by the expo, uh, Saturday to the Shawnee Horse Sale. I think they had another fantastic event out there, sold some very high-quality horses. I, I watched one run through that, uh, it was a pretty substantial amount of money, so it was, uh, it was good to see, it was good to see that sale going on, uh, here locally. I think they're going to continue to have it here, so that's, uh, good to see things keep moving forward.
Uh, I'd like to compliment the parks also. On the way down here, I, then again, went by Boy Scout Park, and there were numerous kids playing basketball on the courts and mowed, and, I mean, it looked really nice, so, you know, the parks group needs to be commended on that. Planning, you know, I know this is hard to put together in a real timely manner, you know? Being able to act on stuff in a short period of time is a major thing, uh, so that third, you know, that three-month span in between, being able to bring it in front of people will make a big difference, you know, because these, these developers, you know, their time is money for them, and I think we need to be more user-friendly for them, and, you know, try to help where we can, uh, if it fits in the comprehensive plan, you know, and, and it gives us the ability to change it quickly if we, if we need to, so I, I appreciate that. Benny?
Well, I also agree with, uh, the commissioners. Shawnee, we are cleaning up Shawnee, and, uh, it's been an embarrassment once or twice to come in and see the trash and stuff that, that's around, and, uh, the park department, street departments, they need to be commended. And I would also like to thank the citizens of Shawnee for supporting or at least doing the mask mandate. Uh, that's, it's been needed, and, uh, so that's basically all I've got to say.
There you go. Well, down to me, and I'll try not to take too long. Um, I'll echo a lot of what my counterparts had up here to say. Yeah, cleaning up, cleaning up Shawnee, I think there's definitely been some, some progress there, Benny. Parks have looked great, um, you know, the, the street department's been out doing some great things for us up there on Interstate Drive, replacing those panels. It looks like, uh, you know, a lot of ways, a, a new, new street up there now, much, much better than it was, and I understand there's some other projects they'll be taking on pretty, uh, pretty quick. Planning, um, man, I tell you, that's impressive. We talked about something a couple of months ago, and we really don't have a good way of doing things, and then here we are, just two months later, and, and we've got a, a very workable option, you know, it, I'm, I'm sure we'll tweak it as, as we go, but, um, thank you for being so responsive. That's something I think that, that we should be is, um, you know, responsive and, and transparent, and, Bob, anything, any que, I always want everybody up here to be very satisfied and, and, um, you know, ask any questions you need to ask, and, you know, get, get to the bottom of anything, and, you know, I mean, the way our job works is we do it right here in front of everybody, and that's just the way it is, and I'll never take personal any, any question that you ask, you're just doing your job just like everybody else, and, and, you know, there's, there's no problem with that at all. So, uh, we want to be responsive, we want to be transparent, and we want to provide as good a city government as we can to you, because, I mean, it belongs to, belongs to you guys, it belongs to all of us, so, uh, thank you very much, and I appreciate everybody coming tonight. So, with that, we will return and move on to the airport authority, it looks like we have next. So, we still have a quorum, we look at the consent agenda, anybody got anything you want to pull out of, probably not, would be my guess, since there's nothing there. So, out of the minutes, uh, we have a motion to...
Motion to approve.
Who did that first? I'd say Bob and Travis, how's that?
That'll work.
All righty, so we will call the question on consent agenda. Motion passes seven zero. New business.
Commissioner, any new business?
We are adjourned and go on to the municipal authority. How about consent agenda here? Anybody like to pull anything out of that?
Mr. Pruf.
Motion to approve, Mr. Rutherford.
Second.
All righty, Mr. Sehorn, motion and a second, we'll, uh, call the question. Motion passes seven zero. New business.
Sorry, any new business?
We're adjourned in an hour.